Chair Colesy?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioners Powers?
Here.
Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Corbin absent.
All right, so we have a quorum. First, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us, please?
Ready, start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A good goal.
Yes, I agree.
All right, next on the agenda is Public Communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So when you come up to speak on Public Communications, understand that we're listening, but we're not going to do anything with it unless it's an emergency. We do have one speaker card for Public Communications, Elizabeth Silva. Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're here for.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Pepin-Silva. I live at 809 Drown, and I am here to ask that the Planning Commission take on, in a future agenda, ordinances around animals in the city limits. I have a situation that's happening with myself and my neighbors, with a neighbor that's behind us that is on Daly. And there are numerous animals on the property, they're running an illegal riding program on the property. And in the five months that I've been working with the city to try to solve this issue that's deeply impacted myself and my neighbors, it's come to my attention that there once was an ordinance on the city books that was somehow removed in 2004, but no one has been able to tell me why that was removed or show me any proof that it was removed. Because there's no ordinance that gives clear guidelines as to how many animals can be on a property, nor manure management, or any dust, or any other kind of issues that have anything to do with animals, the city's hands are tied in a large part of the problem that's going on behind my house. So I respectfully request that this issue be taken up by the Planning Commission since it has to do with zoning and land use, and that we have clear guidelines that residents such as myself can turn to. These guidelines are already in place in Ventura County, and also these guidelines should be following the State Water Quality Control Board's guidelines for manure management, which show clear guidelines for livestock owners, that they cannot just leave horse manure on their property, it must be kept cleaned up and not allowed to get in contact with waterways. And there's a waterway right behind my house, between my house and the property, it's a Baranca, which does have water in it periodically throughout the year.
Okay, you say you, problems with noise, dust, and manure management?
Yes, as well as numerous people each day coming onto the property behind my house for riding lessons.
Okay, and you think there's nothing in the municipal code right now, but there may have been something that was repealed in 2004?
I was told by James Vega, as well as the ordinance officers, that their hands were tied because there's currently no guidelines anywhere on the books in the city of Ojai that can help them in this situation, and that in 2004, there was guidelines, and then they were removed in 2004, but no one has been able to provide me with evidence that why that was removed, or how that happened.
Okay.
But I have requested that.
Great, thank you very much.
If I could just add that I am planning to bring this issue to council to get direction on whether we would want to proceed with the animal limitation ordinance, so it's on our list.
But it clearly seems to be a matter of land use, so it probably should come here. The council, if they decided they were interested in the topic, would probably send it here first.
Yeah.
But a history of any previous ordinance section on this topic, and when and why it was removed, or if we have minutes of a meeting during which it was removed, those I think would all be of interest to the commission.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Am I able to say something to you about this?
You may say anything you like.
It's my understanding that at one point, two horses were allowed per acre, and then that got lifted. So in this case, I think there's like six horses now on that property in a residential zone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, what's the address of this property that has all the horses?
It's 804 Daly. There's six, five to six horses, four goats, a pig, some dogs, and some chickens. And this has been going on-
We don't have any menagerie ordinance, so, okay.
And this has been going on for two and a half years, and I've been working with the city since March, and the issues continue, although a few of them have been mitigated.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All news to me, anybody else heard about this before?
About the ordinance that's on the place?
About, about lots of animals all in one place, and no ordinance that addresses the topic.
This is the first I heard about it today.
Yeah, okay.
I just have one question, so the riding lessons, so there's, there's not, we don't have anything that addresses that, that it's not a residential use?
Yes, if we can prove it's not a residential use. But this particular matter is a code compliance issue, so we, it's really not within our jurisdiction.
Yeah, does this, does this qualify as a home business, just that the equipment appurtenances are unusual, or?
That's all part of the ongoing investigation.
Okay, okay. Well, I look forward to hearing more about it, thank you.
The one thing I will say is, I think the issue is, if there was a clear ordinance to saying you couldn't have this many animals, it's a lot easier to enforce than having to prove all these other underlying facts, so that's, that's the challenge we're in right now.
Okay, well, all of our deliberations can eventually filter up to a legislative body if that turns out to be what's appropriate. Okay, are there any other persons present who wish to speak on Public Communications? Seeing none, we will move on to the next part of the agenda, the consent item. And the one item that we have is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission July 17th. Recommendation from a staff is to approve either as submitted or as amended. Does anyone have any changes to that? I see, since I was absent and will abstain, you get to sign the minutes this time. No hearing, no proposed changes, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, the Ojai Planning Commission minutes of July 17th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Very good, any discussion? Let's have a roll call, Chair.
Powers?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Colesy?
Abstain?
Lottis?
Yes.
Thank you very much. On to item number two, the public hearing item. A design review permit, DRP 19-003, and tree permit, T 19-023, for the construction of a new 5,997 square foot central services building, parking lot, and work under protected trees at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa located at 905 Country Club Road. Assessors parcel 0240010110. General plan use, land use designation is institutional recreational, and the zoning classification is institutional recreational IR3. And I understand a categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. The property owner's Ojai Valley Inn and Spa LLC, and the applicant, Scott Mitchell. And architect and representative Patrick, is it Hush?
Patrick Housh and Paul Poirier.
Housh, and Paul Poirier, okay. Like to, and you are the landscaper, so you will-
Landscape architect, so I'm going to recuse myself-
Depart the scene for this item.
And I'm going to be sitting with the applicant.
Very good, very good. Like to hear from staff first on this.
Sure.
The project, again, is at Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Staff's recommendation is that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the project with required findings for the design review permit and the tree permit, and also the SEQA findings, finding the project to be categorically exempt. This is a new central services building, parking area, and associated landscaping. As defined in the city's ordinance, the IR3 allows for uses that are intended for institutional recreational land uses that will not result in commercial impacts to public facilities and services. This is a change in location for some of the central services operations. It is not expanding the operations of the inn overall. And the applicant can explain that more if they wish to so. As a part of the design review permit, the Planning Commission is supposed to assure that the project complies with the design review permit standards for context, continuity, scale, architectural design. This new building's location is adjacent to the existing central services building and shipping receiving area. The project does include some installation of new trees, low water use plants, and ground cover. There's some statistics that are on page three that talk about the land coverage. There is a maximum allowance of site coverage from buildings and structures of 25 percent. They have to maintain 75 percent open space, they are well below the maximum allowed site There is a photometric plan in the package. They have showed that they comply with the ordinance. There are further conditions of approval that would require that the specific fixtures are dark sky compliant. Their drainage will be required to be in compliance with the city's MPDES permit, also referred to as the MS4 stormwater best management practices. There's condition to comply with that as well. The project was assessed for cultural resources pursuant to City Council Resolution 18-13, which required that, because the project has ground disturbing activities, that we have a preliminary archaeological assessment. And the outcome of that was that a archaeological survey would be required, and any monitoring recommendations that came out of that assessment would be required to be incorporated into the plans and the approval. The findings of that document are confidential. Public art, the project, if it is over $300,000 in valuation, would require public art. It is my understanding that we are close to or above that threshold, is that correct, for valuation, over $300,000? The applicant can look and let you know. There is a request for a tree permit, there are two alternatives in the work underneath drip lines of trees. Alternative one involves trenching under several large eucalyptus trees. Alternative two takes place under five existing oak trees. That is why the tree permit was required, because there was an alternative that would be involving protected trees. And when you're working within the drip line or compressing the root system, you do need that tree permit. Staff is recommending alternative one, which is under the eucalyptus trees, in order to reduce the impacts to protected trees. And with that, I would like to turn it over to the applicant who can explain the project further.
Okay, before we, before we get to that-
Sure.
Are there questions for staff? I'll go last.
I think this is a question for staff. Where on this map is this runoff that a resident was concerned about that was close to the construction site?
I would probably have to defer to Ms. Nolan or Mr. Poirier-
Okay.
-to answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clearly state for the record, I was not the planner that evaluated this project, I am presenting it to you tonight.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, so they submitted a photometric study, and the staff report says that it will be further anal-
It's in this package.
Right, but it says it will be further analyzed, so I'm just wondering-
It will be analyzed again during building permit review-
Okay, okay, for final compliance.
Yes.
Okay.
One thing if I can add too, is that the valuation question that has come up as well, that valuation is set by the building official when the building permit is issued, so even, we could get an estimate today from the applicant, but it's-
It's non-binding.
Yeah, it's set in a specific manner, is defined by the code at the time of building permit.
Correct. I have other questions about, similar to what Ray was asking, but, and the requirement for 401 permit, but why don't we, we could talk about that after the presentation, I think.
They may answer some of your questions.
Whoa.
Nope, Steve's got questions.
I do have a few questions, and, and I want to say for the record, and in front of your boss, that I sent in probably half a dozen or 10 questions on the admin report, and more like a dozen on the resolution itself. And I was very impressed with the detail and the completeness of the responses. I sent them all to Ms. Regal, because I didn't know anybody else was doing this until she told me, but Ms., her name is Liazar?
Leisure.
Leisure, okay. Well, please pass along my compliments to her. I had a few questions about dark skies, and I discovered that I had been reading an old copy of the code, and that generated my question. When I looked, when I pulled a fresh copy of the code on the, on the website, I could see where the changes had been made. I'm satisfied with the answers to all of my questions except two. And this, I'm now reading from the response from Ms. Leisure. There, there's a condition six, and a condition, condition six, I guess. Pages, page three, line six and seven, talks about if prehistoric archaeological sites are found within 60 feet of the proposed limits of ground disturbance. And this seems to imply that the project must do some sort of archaeological investigation outside of the area where they propose to do anything. And I was wondering what was the basis for that requirement? The response was, this is a standard archaeological condition that was part of conditions put in place by a committee that included the city's contract archaeologist, the Chumash tribe representative, the city manager, and others. And so my follow-up question is, if that's the case, why wasn't it the legislative body, that is, the city council, that put this requirement in place? And if it was, it should be in the code, or in the resolutions, or something. And if it wasn't, without speaking to the merits of the requirement, I'd like to understand the basis for levying this requirement, and understand whether it's legal.
Yeah, and I would say, the, this doesn't answer the full question, I'll get back to it, but the recommendations from that working committee were adopted by council, so that I think maybe the answer is just a little incomplete.
Okay, so there's a resolution somewhere-
Yes.
...that institutes this requirement?
Yes, but, but that being said, the 60-foot limit is not one I'm aware of off the top of my head, so we can look at that.
Okay, well, maybe the applicant can address it as well. But it, it just, the response, while it was very clear and very complete-
Yeah.
...raised a serious question in my mind-
Right.
...about the legality of it.
Yeah, there, there were no recommendations taken from the committee that were not approved by the council.
Okay.
So, so I think it was just kind of an incomplete answer-
Okay.
-but I'm not familiar with the 60-foot language off the top of my head.
I'm not sure if it was in the previous adopted council resolution regarding cultural resources from 2015-
I just, well, I-
And there might be a carryover from that.
I was out there during all those council deliberations-
Right.
...about cultural resources, and that was a particular point that I do not remember hearing. My hearing, or my memory isn't perfect, but I don't remember it. Second question, this is on page seven, condition 32, where it talks about stuff that you have on-site. Where's condition 32 here? "No structure of a temporary or permanent character trailer, camper, boat, or equipment, or materials, whatever, or any similar property shall be permitted to remain upon the exterior portion of the lot." Not sure what the interior portion is, but we'll let that go for the moment. I asked that, that the phrase be added after completion of construction activities at the end of the sentence, just to clarify when things have to be removed from the property. The response was, this is a standard condition, and to make a change to this resolution, it would need to be voted on by the commission, so I will suggest that this evening. And if we pass it here, I would ask that city staff add that to the standard condition for projects of this sort.
In, speaking to that specific condition, it is also the language that is pretty consistent with what our code says about storage that is publicly visible from a city street-
Mm-hmm.
-that you're not allowed to store in those locations, so in a front yard or a place that's visible for-
At any time at all?
Correct.
Even during construction?
Right, that would be an allowance, that would be part of the construction-
Okay.
-to allow it to be stored in a accessible areas of the construction.
Well, I definitely want everything cleared once the construction is finished, but this doesn't say that right now.
Correct.
Okay. And, oh, and I would also ask, in, in the future, we may be planning commissioners, but we're not professional planners. So when we see things like MS4, or, or Section 106 Criterion D, it not only doesn't mean anything to me, I don't even know where to find out what it means. So if you could be a little more specific in, in laying out the references, then we can read them and decide for ourselves. Again, my compliments on the report, please pass them along to Ms. Leisure, I thought it was an excellent piece of work. Okay, let's hear from the applicant. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
So I'm Paul Poirier, the architect for Ojai Valley Inn, this portion of the work. And maybe before I jump into the description, I can answer some of your questions.
Okay.
On item six, it says that if prehistoric archaeological sites are found within 60 feet of the proposed limits of ground disturbance-
Mm-hmm.
-archaeological construction monitoring would be required to ensure avoidance of resources. So sometimes archaeologists have determined that there are resources within 60 feet of the building site, I don't know that to be a fact in this case, or-
I wonder how they do that?
Uh, it's maybe recorded somewhere from a previous construction project.
Okay.
So they might know that there's something within 60 feet of the spot, they could demand that we do construction phase inspections while we're doing excavation. That currently is not the case, but they haven't done their full thing yet. But they could also do a surface inspection, I've had this happen on other jobs in other cities, where they do a surface inspection of the area, and they actually find abalone or arrowheads sitting on the surface of the ground, nobody just happened to look for it. And if it's within 60 feet of the site, that means that it's an active site that's sort of shallow, and so that would also require us to have full-time inspection during excavation. So it's just giving, in case they find something that's not expected, obviously if they do the report and they expect, or they find something when they do their test wells, they'd require us to have full-time inspection, but this gives them the opportunity to ask for that if they find something near where we're going to be digging, basically.
Okay, and I, and I was not disagreeing-
Yeah.
...with the requirement per se, but my personal feelings about any of the rules that we're enforcing here are immaterial.
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's an excellent reason to, to provide some sort of a variance or waiver, we're going to enforce those rules whether I like them or not. And I just want to make sure that when we see things that look like rules, that we know where they came from, and, and they're okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think it was calling for any additional excavation outside of the excavation area, to do additional things within a 60-foot limit of where we're going to be disturbing, it's just if something were to have been noted or be visible upon one of their visits.
The passive voice in sentences like this is always a little bit-
Yeah.
...making things unclear.
All right, well, let's get to our project. Basically, this is a support organization project that we're hoping, that we've been working with, and to try to streamline some of their onsite operations. So we don't anticipate that this building is going to bring any actual additional employees to the site, it's just continuing the ongoing operations of changing the sheets and pillowcases and towels at all of the rooms every day. So currently, all of that is being loaded on trucks that come into the site, drop off clean laundry and linens, take the dirty linens off-site, out of town, and it's all done in industrial fashion. So currently, the loading dock and the place where all the sheets arrive and are distributed from is also the place where some of the beverages for consumption on the site, and shampoo, and toilet paper, and other things are delivered to the same place. So you have people that are working on, in the hotel property, all trying to bring all the stuff to the same place as everything else that's going on, and they're driving all different kinds of small electric vehicles to distribute that throughout the hotel. So by taking the linen service and moving it to a separate building that's a little bit of a distance from the other building, it's going to make things simpler in terms of keeping all the linens over there, and it's not going to be near any of the other shipping or receiving that's coming into the site. And operationally, it will help them out to have that activity, which has a lot of different types of transfer of things. They have linen, dirty linens coming from the hotel on a golf cart, being transferred into bins that are then going into trucks, that are then going out to get washed, clean sheets coming in off of trucks on bins, being loaded on golf carts and taken up, up towards the hotel, or to the different facilities they have around the hotel facility. So that is what we're planning on doing. We have a 6,000 square foot building that roughly, three feet less than 6,000 square feet, has a little covered area for staging of dirty linens before they get loaded on the truck.
In case it ever rains?
Yeah, and so people aren't working outside. Currently, some of that stuff is done outside between the buildings over there, things are staged outside, and so we just have a little bit of a roof. If you go to sheet A 1.1 in your packet, you'll be able to see where this building So if you go to the south, south part of the inn, they have their shipping and receiving area that has all of the support structures and administration and facilities departments. And we're down there where it says area of work at the very bottom of the page. So there's the existing shipping and receiving building, the facilities building, administration building, and then there's a parking lot, and then we're putting this linen building down at the end there. So that's where the location is on the site. And the side that has the roof cover and the truck loading dock is located on the north side of the building, which faces the golf course. So that's to make it so that it's less of an impact for off-site, you won't be able to see any of that activity from-
Yeah, but driveway that goes around the building.
The driveway doesn't go around the building, it actually turns in front of the building, and then the truck backs into a truck well.
Ah.
So if you go to the next page, A 2.1, that shows a blow-up of the site- So if you go to the next page, A two point one, that shows a blow-up of the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. A one point two, sorry about that. So the truck will come down the drive aisle, kind of make a U-turn, and then be able to back into where that truck is shown at the loading dock. So, we have a truck full of clean linen coming often, and we have a truck's worth of dirty linen that needs to get in the truck. So it's gonna cause somewhat of a traffic jam, if you will, in terms of trying to get-
Not the same truck?
The same truck.
Oh, it is, okay.
Because going to the same place. So our thought was that we'd use the covered porch here as linen comes in off the hotel to put the bins with a double loading door. As the truck backs in, they can offload all of the clean linen into the warehouse, and then they'll have the other loading door open, and they can load all the dirty linen straight by going in a straight shot, straight across, right into the truck. Way more efficient than weaving around all of the shampoo and the beverages and, you know, all sorts of things that they have going in their existing facility, and it should make this operation, um, very efficient.
And so you'll just be moving some of your personnel that are working in the shipping and receiving building now down to this one?
Right. And they all park in the same parking lot. We added a few extra spaces just to, uh, make sure that there's parking near this building for folks.
Could you answer a question for me?
Sure.
I'm, um, because I'm not in this industry, how often does that happen?
Daily.
Linen in, linen out, is daily?
Right, Scott?
Yeah, every day.
Sure.
Yeah, every one to three AM.
One to three AM?
Yeah, one AM to three AM, every day, and, uh, and it's the one truck, as mentioned.
Okay.
So if you go to the next page, this is, A two point one shows the floor plan. So basically, it's a big, open warehouse that has a little bump out for the truck on the north side with a recessed loading dock, so that all of the loading is happening internal to the building. And we're able to minimize, um, exterior noise on that west side. As things kind of roll in, it'll be fairly quiet for the outside storage on the right side, and it'll be, you know, going over a little bit of a ramp to get into the truck on, on the loading dock side. Then you go to the next page, and we're doing a, uh, super efficient and cost-effective building system for this. It's, uh, all the other buildings out there are sort of a conventional butler building, where they have a metal truss, and then they apply, um, some pert, girts and pearlins that span four or five feet, and they have metal roofing or metal siding spanning over that as an envelope, and it needs to be insulated on the inside, and you put some finishes on the inside of that. But, uh, we've been doing a number of buildings with the company out of San Luis Obispo, so we're gonna be bringing the specialty contractor down, do these new, uh, called king span buildings. They use them a lot for wineries and breweries. They're super efficient, and they go up very fast, so we'll be able to build the envelope much faster than a normal building, which will minimize the impact in terms of construction noise, because we'll be able to, as you guys can throw the, the envelope of the building up and like-
That's the heavy, noisy work, yeah.
Yeah, four weeks, and then people are working inside of a building that has the complete envelope made. So this kind of system has a, uh, galvanized corrugated exterior panel, and then it has foam, and then it has another panel that's the finished interior on the inside. So all of the metal framing's exposed after you put this in. You don't have to drywall the inside of the building, because you basically have a metal-finished building all on the inside, they're gonna be hosed off if you wanted to. We're doing this for a number of buildings, we're doing one in Boulton right now, and they do a bunch of them for brewery, winery buildings up around Paso Robles and Templeton. So Rarick Construction's been doing a number of these buildings, um, up in that area. They've done a couple of buildings with us down in the Santa Barbara County area, and we got them to come all the way down here to help us out, because the building comes in very affordably. So back to how much the building's gonna cost, the shell itself will be three hundred thousand dollars, around fifty dollars a square foot, plus the cost for the foundation and the site work, so it'll probably be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that. So we'd be over the three hundred thousand dollar threshold by some amount.
Okay.
So that's about all I have to say. Scott Mitchell's here from the inn, if you have any questions about operations.
I have a question about when you say foam in the walls. Like, tell me more about that.
I should've brought a sample.
Like, what kind, what's it made of, what? Foam can mean a lot of things.
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact chemical compound that's in there, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not polyisocyanureate, which makes poisonous gas. It's, it's an inert material, um, and it's kind of a non-flammable sort of construction. This building will be fully fire-sprinkled anyway. So I don't have an answer to that.
So is it, is it brought onsite in solid slabs, or is it sprayed in place?
No, it's not, it's not, it's, uh, brought in place in four-foot-wide panels that are pre-cut to the length that you want, so it's not quite a prefab building, but it's a prefab kit of parts that comes out.
And it'll all have outgassed at that point, so if there were any noxious gases-
It's all manufactured in a factory. And seamed with, uh, metal on the two big sides. And they actually have metal that wraps around the parts that connect the panels together. The ends have an end cut on it at the top and bottom that gets sealed off with a closure piece of metal. But by no means are those like totally sealed off to the elements, but I don't believe there's any kind of off, off-gassing or anything like that.
Are there sprinklers on the inside or on the roof?
Yes, they're on the inside.
And you, you have a hydrant right there onsite, or how does?
Let me check out Glenn's plan, I believe.
Any hydrant when I drove down there?
Yeah. I'm sure the fire department will make us put one if there isn't one down there, but let me look. Okay.
There is one outside a loading dock?
The, of this building?
The existing loading dock.
Okay. Yeah, and what's that approximate distance? Water for fire suppression is one of my pet peeves, and, um, I know Casitas right now will not certify more than fifty gallons a minute for two hours.
It looks like that we're putting one right in front of the building, next to the loading zone for the handicap space, if you go to page three or six.
So you're gonna be trenching the existing parking lot?
There, luckily for us, there's an existing fire- the building.
Sorry.
So, um, there's a, if you go to page three of six on the ECG plan.
Three point six?
Three of six. If you look where the handicap parking space is, there's a loading zone, and right next to that, there's a FW line, which is a fire-water line. And we're only running about thirty feet from the existing fire main, because there's a big loop that runs-
FM, that's the fire main?
FW, yeah, fire-water.
Fire-water, I see.
And then we're also tying in, right next to that, is where we're tying into the fire line to put the double detector check for-
And you're putting sprinklers inside the building anyway?
Yeah, yeah. So the fire department would require that we have hydrants, so they can reach around the whole building with the fire hose, a hundred and fifty feet, so.
And then there's a second hydrant at the-
There's one at the other building up the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know if that's four-inch or six-inch, the, the, the pre-existing one?
I didn't even look around that other building. I'd be surprised if it was one of those little four-inch wharfs, but could be.
I'm sure it's a big one.
You have two or three buildings there already, I would think it would be a standard six-inch-
Yeah.
Hydrant. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Lottis, you have some questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, so, um, I don't, I'm looking at the grading plan, which I guess is three of six and four of six. So we've got approximately lots of disturbance, but what, where, I mean, is this going, how much? Or is it going beyond what's the existing kind of dirt area?
It's not really going very much beyond. You can see the existing contours, so it's cutting a little bit on the north. Actually, if I look at the north there, oh, it would be the southeast corner. I believe.
It's staying on flat ground?
Pretty much, you know, I, there's probably, in my opinion-
See where the slopes are there.
Right.
Yeah, low probability of finding any archaeological artifacts, because it's already in a flat graded pad that's, appears to be previously disturbed by me to make a dirt parking lot, so.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how this relates to what's out there. So are you taking, so, so, um, it doesn't seem like the south end to me, but I guess it is the south. Where, so at the south end of the prop, property, there's the, uh, there's like a knoll where it's about, the, you've got the green waste, and then there's the little knoll up above that. So are you cutting into that knoll area?
Not for the building, but for some of that flat, flattish lot that Glenn Pace wanted to make back there behind the building.
And so that really will be flattened out completely?
Right, in the back.
So are you removing trees or not? I thought I read in here some, you're not removing trees.
I'll let Kathy speak to that.
Okay.
Okay.
She's got a better grasp of it. Before I, before we leave, though, the, uh, civil plan, because somebody was asking about what happens with the water. Think on page six of six, the water's running off to this flow-through detention basin that's to the west of the building. So there's that rectangular J-shaped, um, thing that's just to the west of the building, and the water will flow off down there where it'll percolate into the soil.
I know, I know.
And that just goes back into the basin, I guess.
That-
Into the Ojai Basin.
It's, percolates into the ground there, and then, um, it would go into the storm drain system if it were to overflow.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I, I, on, back on page four of six, I see the storm drain lateral that, where you're going to trench. So is there a reason why you can't take that under the paved area for the parking area?
I'm not sure what you mean.
So the storm ladder, the storm drain lateral is going out to where the trees are, and it looks, I mean, I don't think that's any, I don't think that's a disturbed, I don't, it's hard to tell, because we don't have the existing limits of disturbance indicated on the grading plan, but, um, you know, the storm lateral, the storm drain lateral, wait, is that the, is that the-
Wraps around the north end of the building there?
Okay, I'm, actually, I wanted to ask about, um, the sewer force main, sorry. I assume that's different, you've got a storm drain and you've got a sewer main.
Very different.
SD is the storm drain?
Yeah, so I actually am wondering where the sewer drain, sewer force main is, where that alignment is.
Yeah, it looks like there's, oh, alternate one and alternate two, that's why it shows two paths up there in the upper left.
I think the sewer is going straight to the east, where it's going up-
And then north.
And then it goes north to that, that line.
Okay, oh, the FM, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so the alt, staff is recommending alternate one, because that will save more trees, okay? And so, okay.
Temporarily impinges on one of the fairways.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lottis, it's, um, alternate one is under the drip line of the eucalyptus versus alternate two is under the drip line of the oak, no trees to be removed.
Right, right, okay. So, um, okay, the sewer station is behind the building. Okay. Um, okay, I, I was just wondering if there was any reason to take, any, uh, place alternatively to take it, but I under, I got it.
I don't think that that storm drain line is impacting any trees either. You could see the edge of the existing canopy is that cloudy-looking thing on sheet three of six. And SD, even though it looks like it's going through that landscape area, it's actually just kind of a big, um, dirt, flat, flattish lot there.
Okay, it would, in, in, uh, future grading plans, it would be really helpful to indicate, the boundary of existing disturbed area, so that we could really see that. And then I assume that, so you've got the one, um, wetlands area marked, and the other one must be further away, so it doesn't, it would not, it's not on the scale of this, this sheet four of six. Because you're only showing the one, but not the two, but I think it's off the, I think it's off that map. So I, and so I do have a question, this, um, so we did get a letter asking, the comment was that, um, and it's from a person who has credentials in this area, whether they, there should be a 401 water, uh, quality certification required for this. Could, can, can anybody talk about that, or respond to them?
Maybe our city attorney can address that.
Okay.
My own? Yeah. Uh, so, so we did look into this, um, earlier, so a 401 water quality certification is required under the Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act applies to wetlands. Uh, so this is a wetland, but we determined that, so the, the water certification is only necessary where the project will have a potential discharge into the wetland. Uh, the architect has confirmed, the, um, the landscape architect has confirmed that the closest disturbance resulting from the project is a hundred and eighty feet from the wetland. The proposed detention basin and associated drainage swale is two hundred and twenty-three feet from the wetland. The closest sewer line disturbance is two hundred and ten feet from the wetland, and the two thousand two Ojai-
Is that the storm drain lateral?
No, he said the sewer main.
No, I'm, storm drain lateral, that's going over toward that area.
So the cl- Right, I think it is the storm drain lateral, correct. And the two thousand two Ojai Valley Inn EIR confirms that based on the survey positions of sensitive features adjacent to the proposed central services, all improvements, including the extent of grading, are located outside of the service, sensitive areas. Uh, so therefore, we do not feel like there's going to be any kind of, um, potential discharge into the wetland, and so therefore, um, a water quality certification is not needed.
Per the, so the EIR that was done, uh, that you're referring to, so that actually, uh, addressed this project?
Specifically, yeah.
Did, okay.
This area, this building, the-
The area.
Central services building, yeah.
Did it, um, and did it, so it didn't really address the specifics of the storm drain lateral?
It, the, let's see, no, that, the, the specifics of the storm drain lateral, that was, um, the two hundred and ten-foot distance from the, from the wetland, that was brought to our attention by, um, the landscape architect, so Commissioner Nolan.
Okay, so that really was not specifically addressed in the EIR?
No.
Okay.
That part was not.
Okay, I, uh, if the commission ends up, um, adopting the resolution, I think that I would like to have, um, just documentation obtained from the regional water quality control boards, just saying that the 401 permit is not required in the, in the conditions.
The, the original EIR would not, would have addressed this-
The area.
Piece of ground, but not the storm drain lateral, because there was no plan for it.
And it's going, it's, you know, it actually is in the area, I think, I suspect that's past the disturbed area. I don't know, but, um, I just, I mean, if it's not required, it should be a fairly simple thing to get. They go in, they take this stuff in there, knowing a 401 permit's not required.
You, you quoted some distances, I recognize, they came from the landscape architect. What's, what's the requirement for this report? Is it two hundred feet, is it a hundred and fifty feet?
So the California regulations don't specify a specific number of feet. Uh, what they do say is- Uh, what they do say is potential discharges into the wetlands and we figured based on these distances that there couldn't be a potential discharge into the wetlands because it, it's too far away. And because of the way that the water drains out and, and you said it's going to percolate into the.
So what's, so what's the distance from the storm, I mean, I, I don't even know how wide that, that, I mean, they're going to trench out there.
Yes.
I don't even know how wide that's going to be and, and I just, it seems to me that it would be relatively easy. Well, okay, you're dealing with Regional Water Control, Control Board, but, but still, if it's, if a permit's not required and it's based on distance, it ought to be easy to, to, um, who's saying Kathy? Oh.
Oh, other Kathy.
The storm drain lateral is just around the north end of the building and dumping into the, uh.
Well, it's going past all the paved areas. It's actually, I mean, I think it's going past the just limits of the current disturbed area.
If I can comment a little bit on the storm drain?
Yeah, it's right here. It's going all the way along here and over here.
Are you sure?
It says storm drain lateral.
Storm drain, okay.
Are you referring to the storm drain that's on the north side of the building and that flows into the detention basin? Is that the one you're referring to?
Um, I'm.
I guess I could come look.
Yes.
Make it easier.
I'm just, I'm looking at the storm drain. Maybe this is not the storm drain, but it looks like it's going over here, here.
That's, that's something old.
Existing?
Yeah, the storm drain is actually right here and it's, compared to the.
Oh, okay, so you're not, you're not, you're not constructing anything over here.
And if you look right here, this dark dash line, that's the project limit line.
Okay, yeah.
So that's the old, that's the area where.
No, this is what I was looking at.
So the project.
Existing storm drain, okay.
And she was talking about these lines that are existing.
Okay, that.
Did you, Kathy, Kathy, give this to the gentleman? Because I want to ask a question.
Thank you, thanks for, thank you for clarifying that. I was just looking at that and I, um, so, okay, um, okay, so the E I R addressed, um, addressed any, the limits of the project as shown on the dark, the dark line. Is that correct? Okay, okay. And, let's see, did I ask if you're, are you taking out any existing trees? I thought I said, read somewhere you were not.
No, it's just a matter of where do they trench and.
Okay, and, um, so you're maintaining all the existing trees, the, the arborist report did not evaluate existing trees for safety. I wasn't sure why not, um, especially if they, but, um.
I can call.
Any comment? Okay.
Um, so I actually, um, walked the site with the arborist and, um, the majority of the trees are kind of outside of the disturbance area, although they are adjacent to. So really, the only areas where there would be possibly some compromise would be the sewer lines. And there's alternate A and alternate, or one and two. And of course, the one that the city is proposing is to do the one by the eucalyptus. So most likely, what, what will happen is once that decision is made or, you know, depending on your, um, uh, recommendation, um, then, but the arborist will probably come back and do further, um, another report on the, uh, the yuks, if that's the option that ends up happening, just to see for safety if there's any additional trimming or what have you that may need to happen. They are tall trees. I don't know if you had a chance to go out there and look, so.
Yeah.
You could see what they look like. So that, that was an initial assessment that was done.
Okay.
I wanted to say one thing for the record. I know that earlier you had mentioned, um, the site measurements that I gave. And the third bullet item, which was alternate two, that, uh, two hundred ten feet to the east was actually to the, um, alternate two, um, sewer line, not the storm drain line, just for the record.
Kathy, could you stay up there?
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Um, could you define for me what a bioretention basin is?
Yes, so basically, um, on the, um, east side of the building and the south side of the building, there's a swale. So all the water that's going to be running off from the site, there is some sloped areas there.
Yes.
Um, in the building will be capturing the water. It's going to flow into the detention area and it's going to be vegetated. So it'll be planted. There are two drains that will accommodate, um, overflowing, as, um, Paul had mentioned earlier, that's going to drain and percolate back into the soil. So all the water's going to be, um, maintained on site and the bioretention area is planted with natives as it, as are all the other plants on the project.
So there, there's no, um, impact what's over on the wetlands because it's not going to go into the groundwater and percolate?
It catches it all.
Okay.
Before it runs off.
And purifies it.
Yeah, by the way, if you, um.
J-shaped trench there, basically.
Twenty-five feet wide.
That buffers the water and you've got a drain on each end that runs it back into an underground.
Right, and by the way, um, that baranca that runs through there, um, does capture water from the neighborhood across the highway and it runs in there also, in addition to any overflow from the wetlands. So there is, you know, potentially stormwater running from that residential area existing.
This project.
Not from our project, yeah.
And then, um, alternate one and alternate two. Alternate two, um, goes through the oaks, alternate one goes through the yuks. So which are more sensitive? Which, which would be most impacted, the oaks or the yuks?
The oaks are a protected species.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably one of the first considerations. Um, we're going to be doing, if you've noticed, there's a tree protection plan, so all the trees will be fenced and protected and, you know, signage and what have you. But potentially, you know, they're going to be pulling out some asphalt, doing some trenching, um, under the canopy potentially a little bit. But if I, well, I think the thing to look at is the oaks are protected species, so if you had to put a value on one tree over the other, they would be more valuable.
Yeah, I was just thinking of healthy trees more than protected species. I understand they're protected species, but just in terms of robustness of the species.
Um, and did you ask, did you ask between oaks and yuks?
Yeah.
So I think eucalyptus are now on our invasive species list.
They actually are.
Yeah, and, and give it another ten years, I think these yuks will go the same way as the ones along Country Cut Drive.
Right.
They'll get black on one side and then they'll eventually come down.
Right, and that's the city's recommendation to go with the option to, to preserve the oaks. But anyway, you, uh, the arborist does, and if you look on the tree protection plan, there are guidelines as to, you know, the minimum size of a cut you would do on a roof, root, and those are also monitored while the construction's happening by an arborist. So, you know, the best care is being given at that point.
So when it says, um, I'm on page five of six, um, there's numerous oaks and around the project area, most can be protected from any impacts by fencing. So that implies that we may lose some because most are protected from impacts, but that doesn't say all, so.
Right, so basically, like I had mentioned initially, the trees that I, um, know, after being out there, especially with the arborist and from my own experience, the ones where the sewer line would probably be the most impacted. All the other oaks are well enough away from the disturbance and with the fencing that there shouldn't be an, any issue. Possibly there is one oak in the parking lot. It was probably a planted, you know, uh, landscape oak, not naturally occurring, I'm guessing. Um, but once again, we'll be fencing around that also and it, they'll all be monitored while the work's being done under the trees, so.
Wha- what I'd like to see is if there's a case where a tree is lost and from direct impact of this project, that it gets replaced by one or two others.
Um, that's actually, oftentimes, pretty standard. It's in, yeah, I'm pretty sure it is in the code. And I know on other projects where we were taking out trees and what have you, where we were going to be doing disturbance, we would do, um, a mitigation plan. So potentially, if something did happen, we most likely would have to do that. I don't think.
So who follows up on that? Let's say, uh, a tree gets diseased and it takes a couple of years for, and it's.
Well, the disease isn't, uh, caused by the project.
I don't mean disease like bacteria. I mean, like, because of the construction, it gets weakened somehow, there's an impact, but it takes a while for that impact to show up.
I could see a timeframe of two years, up to two, if a tree is lost in the next two years or something.
Yeah, I don't know that that's in the code, but I completely understand what you're saying and I.
I just want there to be accountability somewhere and it doesn't always happen right away.
I don't know, I guess, you know, it could be in the conditions or something.
Yeah, right, I think it could be in conditions.
Yeah, because potentially, it looks like everything, you know, according to the arborist, will be protected during construction and we shouldn't have a problem, but yes, there always is a possibility on any project when you're working under any tree that potentially, something could happen, so.
No, I, I can totally see there's a conscious approach here.
The replacement, yeah, so I think that will be up to you.
I just, I do have a question of staff, though. What, what is the process for the heritage tree designation? I mean, an actual designation, not, not saying that it's a nice big tree and it would qualify, but does the property owner have to apply?
Go ahead.
You know, I can, um, I, I was actually, I'm looking at our code right now and I thought it was spelled out here, but I'm looking for it, so I can look at that, but I don't have it right off the top of my head.
I don't know that it is spelled out in our code.
I thought I found it.
Before and it just says heritage, but I don't know that there's any link to define what a heritage tree is in the city.
So if it is a heritage tree and it, it fails, does it get replaced because it is a heritage tree? Is there any requirement for that?
I don't believe there's a definition of what heritage tree is and how to designate it. I do know we do have some landmark trees, such as over in Libby Park. So if, in the absence.
We don't actually have a process for designating.
Not that I know of.
They just say they're big and they're nice and that's it.
Uh, we don't talk about skyline trees or trees over a certain diameter or breast size other than oaks and sycamores.
So, so any, any valley oak or any live oak is.
It's protected.
Protected, but not necessarily, it could be a heritage tree, okay.
I, I have the definition in front of me.
Yeah, there we go.
In, it says heritage tree shall mean any tree of any genus, whether a species or hybrid of any size, which is to designate as such by a resolution of the city council based on its historical, cultural, or other value as determined by the city council.
Right, but it doesn't have like, you know, over a certain circumference, over a certain height, age, or.
That was damaged by the.
I have one in my front yard. Um, okay, so there's no process, it's just.
Well, the process is a city council resolution, but it's not clear that there are criteria for designating something.
There's no criteria, there's no application process.
Not a well-established process, correct?
Um, um, okay, so, so if there are oak trees out there, they are protected as far as they're protected by our current ordinance that just says they're.
Correct.
They're protected, so, um, but there's no requirement for replacement?
Um, I, I think I'd refer to staff on that.
Correct, currently.
Okay, okay.
In our existing tree protection ordinance, no.
So, yeah, I, I, I agree with your thoughts, Ray, about the, maybe, uh, looking at some kind of a replacement requirement in the condition.
Okay, anything else?
I, I had a question for Mr. Poirier, sorry. Um, I gave you that little picture there. That, uh, that came off of Google Maps this weekend, this past weekend. And it shows one or more white structures down in the area that I think is graded kind of flat right now where you plan to put this building. Those are evidently no longer there. I don't know when that picture was taken. But is that, is that the right area?
Yep, that's right where the building's going. They had some temporary, they're kind of like tarp tents over some construction material that they were staging down there.
I see, okay.
Are you talking to the south here, this little white square?
Yeah, those, those little white things down there.
It's approximately the building pad.
Yeah. It looked like, because there's a chain link fence up there now in a flat graded area behind it.
Yeah. So the unit had, they had some stuff that they were just setting outside, weather got bad, they put some tarp things over it, but will be freeing up space where the linens used to be by putting the linen building over here so we can just get everything all sorted out and not just haphazard over there.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Um, any more questions of staff or the applicant?
Okay, just one more question. So, uh, is there going to be construction fencing? I mean, I know we're going to have fencing to protect the trees. So will we have fencing along that, um, along the western edge, yeah, along the western edge of the elements of the project work?
There will be, I'm sure, temporary construction fencing around the site to keep people out and from keeping people, but I don't know that we're proposing any additional new permanent fencing.
No, no, no.
So it didn't seem to be any.
No, construction fencing to, um, just maintain a, uh, an obvious limit of work and to prevent, you know, some bulldozer from dumping a bunch of dirt down that slope that's right close to the edge of the parking area. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I remember the fencing required for the trees. I just wasn't sure if there would be any construction fencing along this edge and it seems to me that that, I just think that's a good idea to let everybody know they can't just dump stuff over there.
Along the west edge of the existing parking lot, you're saying?
Or the new.
The.
Is that, is that something that is generally required?
Uh, it's not required, however, you could condition it that during construction that there be a, uh, a construction fence.
Okay.
Between the parking lot and the wetland in order to preserve or protect the wetland.
Okay, okay, all right, good.
It'd probably want to be around the area of disturbance line so that they could grade out that J, the J ditch where the plants are going to grow. And in looking at a little bit further.
That's fine, I mean, I'm sure that.
Temporary without.
I would leave that to staff to work with you in terms of what's, um, what's reasonable.
Great.
Any more questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, Kathy's showing, what page is that on? L four has a tree protection fence on that west side?
Oh, okay.
That'll accomplish the same thing.
Right, and it's in, um, you know, the, the work area. It does cover the, the banks down below. And there's a detail on the fencing on the two, one, two.
Right here, Kathy.
It's that dotted line.
It's right around the west end of the construction work, yeah.
It says tree fencing typical symbol and applies to aggression.
I think Commissioner Lottis was talking about extending that fencing farther to the north.
This is the existing parking lot right here, so we're not really doing anything over there.
You're doing the work where it's, uh.
The gray stuff.
Starting in the shadow, the shaded area, okay. Okay.
I have a question for Kathy, I believe. Does the rainwater runoff from the roof going into bioretention, is it slanted that way? So all the water is going to be directed.
Yeah, so it's actually a two-stage system that Glenn Pace at E C G has designed. So the roof water, the water from the truck well, the water that hits the side, any water running out of the parking lot, runs into the J-shaped twenty-five-foot-wide bioretention basin, which is the preferred spot for the water to go because it'll be being absorbed by plants that are in there. So if it's a light rain, it'll be going in there. It's designed to handle one inch of rain per hour over the area that's draining to it, so it's kind of a lot of water. The bottom of the basin's about three feet below the parking lot level, so there's quite a volume in there that it can hold as it's, and it's calculated based on the percolation rate of the soil.
From there.
Then, on top of that, there's these drains that are in the basin and usually they're not at the same level as the bottom, but they stick up a little bit, just in case a ton of water comes in there and it starts, you know, building up like a lake. It starts going in those drains and those drains go down to infiltration trench that's dug under the parking lot and filled with gravel. that's dug under the parking lot and filled with gravel that then expands the percolation area to a new somewhat dry area to be able to increase the absorption area for infiltration if there's a big storm.
Keep it in the Ojai Basin.
Yeah, so, that's right, that's right.
That's fantastic.
So, it's redundant.
And it's an example for other builds.
Exactly.
Just one other question, so, so, I just realized this.
Name of the number?
So, you're gray, so back to the grading plan. So, you're grading into that knoll at the southern end. So, you'll be able to do that, no retaining walls?
Yeah, that's what we're planning on doing right now.
Okay, all right.
And just, I guess, not that it matters for this application. We had studied bringing the buildings all the way around the back of the building. We studied doing truck turnarounds on the south side of the building. And we ended up finding that we felt that the impacts to everything else were lessened by keeping the trucks to the north of the building and have them do a U-turn in the parking lot, then back into the loading dock. So, we kind of abandoned all those ideas of the truck movements back to the south there.
Basically, working with existing flat paved ground, yeah.
Maybe we just would have made it a gigantic, huge paved area back there.
All right, now this is much better.
Done? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy. All that being said, I will open the public hearing if there is anyone present who wishes to speak on this agenda item, even if you haven't given us a speaker card, but you should have. And seeing no response, I close the public hearing again, and the commission will deliberate. Ray?
I'm satisfied with the plan before us. I would like to condition the tree replacement, I'm not sure how to word that. But I'm satisfied with the efficacy of the design and that it won't hurt the wetlands and that all the precautions have been taken to have it be environmentally safe.
Okay, and, and I, before we go any farther, I apologize to staff and to the applicants, but there was a piece of the agenda that I forgot called...
Yes.
Disclosure of Site Visits and Expartee Contacts.
Well, I had no expartee contacts after the fact.
And the site visit?
Um, I'm familiar with the site, I didn't go this time.
So, I also have no expartee contacts, but I did visit the site. And, so I became familiar with it. I actually, I've never, I felt like somebody would stop me from driving in there. I drove in, I walked all around, nobody, every, nobody asked me what I was doing, so... I was expecting to be, you know...
Accosted.
Accosted at any moment.
And I was the same, I was there Friday or over the weekend. Nice quiet spot. I did note that driving up and down the parking lot in both directions, I had to work very hard at being able to see any traffic on Highway 33. There's just one little spot you can kind of see in between the trees. So, I don't think that the construction will be a visual disturbance to anyone. I also climbed up to the top of the berm that's, that separates the construction area from, I think it's either the 7th or the 16th fairway, I'm not sure. They keep switching sides on the numbering. And, and it looked to me, I guess that's, the other side of the berm is where alternate one trenching would go. I think out there's a little, there's a little McAdam path for golf carts there along the side of the fairway, I think that's where that is. Anyway, I, it looked to me about as remote an area as you're going to find on the inn property. And I don't think it will disturb anyone to do the con, the construction there. Uh, but I had no expartee contacts and I kept waiting for someone to say, "Who are you and why are you here?" Okay, back to the deliberations, Kathleen, if you...
Well, I, I would strongly like to put the alternative one as the, what's, what constitutes the approved project. And, yeah, I think that protecting the oak trees is, takes precedence over the eucalyptus and those are likely to be...
Going the way of all flesh, yeah.
And, let's see, I would also like to put in a tree ratio, a requirement for a tree replacement.
With a time, with a time...
Within, if a tree fails within, I don't know, what do you think, two years?
Well, Kathy, you're, you're the tree expert.
You know, it's hard to say.
When can you notice if a root removal is going to...
I think usually within a couple of years. I think that's fair.
Okay.
Chair Quillisi, Commissioner Lottis, proposed condition 13 in attachment A on page four of nine talks about if a protected tree is proposed for removal primarily for the reasons of convenience, personal taste, to facilitate new constructions, that they would require the replacement of trees. We could borrow some of that language with your concern and, and put a timeframe on that to be further analyzed by their arborist for the appropriateness of the size.
That would be, okay.
Yeah, I, I just, but I want to make sure, even though I'm in favor of that, I think, and I brought it up, I want to make sure that's something that can be evidentiary. Is that the right word, like, you can actually prove that that's the reason that tree?
I don't think, I, I just, I think...
I doubt that's possible.
I don't think it's possible.
Right, so I'm wondering if that's a condition that's even...
If it's a tree, you know what, if it's a tree and it's in the area where they dug and it starts failing, they have to replace it, period, you know, with, I, I mean, we're very, I think we're very reasonable within two years, I mean, it, you know.
Replace it with something.
It may very well, yeah, well, replace it with an oak tree. I mean, a valley oak or coastal live oak, I mean, those are like coastal live oaks out there, but, and the valley oaks may not, may not do well out there, I'm not sure, but...
Because we're talking about trenching near eucalyptus.
No, no, I...
Which tend to be tall and narrow and don't interfere with the golf fairway. But an oak tree would be very different there.
So, the sub-condition that I was referring to, it says the trees to be removed shall be replaced with trees of suitable size, uh, suitable type, size, and number. Oaks and sycamores shall generally be required to replace with like species. Other mature trees shall be replaced with trees from the approved replacement tree list. So, you could specify...
That's it, you're replacing the eucalyptus with native trees and that...
That was the language that I was proposing that we could borrow from with a timeframe.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds, I'm happy with that. Also, number 12, maybe, I don't know why we'd be having explosives out there. I just would like to have explosives shall be prohibited, period, I don't even know why that's...
Especially to trim a tree.
Is it, is it possible or is it cause for us to make a comment?
Come on up.
This is in, this is in regards to the tree replacement. So, you know, typically, we're required to have trees, a certain amount of trees for parking, which we did. But in addition, we do have some, we have sycamores and oaks that we added to the site.
Oh, yeah, the planting plan was really very nice.
Yeah, so what I, what I've done in the past in other projects where I've had to show a mitigation table in the event that a species was lost, I show on the plan another table that there actually are trees on there in addition to what's required that could act potentially as mitigation ones and/or what you're suggesting to do something else. But I just wanted to point that out that we do have...
Oh, that's good, I'm glad you did, so it offset, it offsets.
Exactly, yeah.
In, in your professional opinion, if we were to go with alternative one in terms of the sewer main location, do you anticipate there could be any damage to an oak or sycamore?
No, once again, they're going to be fenced and we're going to have an arborist on site and there are regu, you know, we have guidelines as to the size of the root, the minimum size of a root that can be cut. A lot of times, we have them do hand digging in that area once it's exposed. So, all those are, it's kind of determined on site based on the conditions.
They're also well-removed if we use that root, that, that rooting of the forest main. You're well-removed from any protected trees, isn't that right?
Right, but a lot of times, the actual trees will go beyond the canopy. But as far as the, the fencing and the canopy restriction, it's five feet plus another foot for the fencing. So, essentially, six feet from that canopy edge, we won't be doing any work. Or if we have to, it's all strictly monitored. And like I said, even, I've been on numerous projects where we just stop the trencher, okay, now you have to hand dig, and they'll have to hand dig that portion, if, if needed.
Yeah, okay.
They would do that, so we'll definitely do our best. I hope everybody does, but I am saying that.
Of course, thank you.
So, okay.
My personal feeling is while I sympathize with the philosophy of, of a condition like number 13 as it applies to the eucalyptus, and condition 13 already applies to protected trees, right? Isn't that what we're saying? Okay. If we're talking about potential damage to one of the eucalyptus trees near which alternative one does trenching, I don't think anyone at the inn is going to shed a tear, and I wouldn't either.
Well, for me, it's not about the type of tree. For me, it's that we need more trees in this valley.
I, I agree, and that's, and they're putting in more trees already.
And, and to live into the declaration of climate change emergency that the council just signed on to, so...
Yeah.
It may, may not be a native tree or a tree we, you know, on our hierarchy of trees.
Of goodness of trees.
A loss of a tree is a loss of a tree.
Okay.
That's kind of where I come from on it.
So, we would be, if, if the eucalyptus, if a eucalyptus tree failed, it would be replaced with a native tree or something that was more appropriate?
Mm-hmm, and I hear what, what Commissioner Nolan's saying about the offset, that there's trees they're putting in that weren't there.
They're adding 12 trees, yeah.
Yet, I don't think...
We're putting in 12 trees.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's fantastic, yet I, I, and I understand the offset idea, but still, if we lose a tweet, tree, then we just replace the tree.
Agreed.
Well, I, as, I'm, I'm guessing that I'm the only member of the commission present who has actually played that golf course. I would hate to see oak trees lining the fairways where there are eucalyptus trees now. Because I would hate to see oak trees or sycamores in, in place of any lost eucalyptus because it will interfere with the golf.
I'm not a golfer, so tell me more.
Okay. The oak trees and the sycamores tend to be more broadly positioned as they mature. And that, and that gets in the way of where your ball might go that would otherwise be legally still on the fairway.
Got it, so they have more of a horizontal impact.
More than a eucalyptus.
More than a, which is vertical.
That's, that's my concern. If we start talking about replacing a lost eucalyptus with a protected species or anything else quote "appropriate" end quote, which I'm not really sure what that means. I'd, I'd hate to see a broad tree placed where it would interfere with the golf. I don't play there anymore, by the way.
Wouldn't that be like Augusta, though, you know, they have those giant, they have those giant trees all along the fairway? I'm just, I'm just teasing.
Yeah, I was going to say, that sounds, that sounds like an opportunity to better your game.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that if there's the clause about native trees or as appropriate, and that would be worked out between staff and the applicant, I mean, I, I would be okay with that and feel that they could come up with something suitable, yes. Well, it would be, it, it allows, it allows for, for them to work together to come up with something that would be appropriate.
I think that would be fine as long as, as we take into account the use of the land today.
I wanted to clarify, is the concern, Chair Quillisi, that the placement, a replacement tree would be planted in that same location or anywhere else on the inn's property? I don't think this condition says it's in the same location.
No, it doesn't say in the same location. So, as long as a replacement for a lost eucalyptus, if such were to happen, were placed such that the replacement tree did not interfere with the play of golf, then I'm happy with that.
So, would changing the language of 13, if a protected tree or eucalyptus, because it's not a current protected tree under our ordinance, and then leaving the rest of the language, satisfy the commission?
Here's a quick comment. So, basically, when you do a mitigation on a replacement tree, all right, so now eucalyptus are actually considered invasive in our tree protection plan? So, they have no value? I mean, they do have value, but they don't have value. The value is, is that they provide canopy and shade and, and all that, but as far as being invasive, they don't have the value. So, I would, I would request if you're adding that condition, we would need to know what size or what the value is on the replacement, because if it's, if it's not defined, well, that's open to interpretation. And I would suggest...
What's a small oak or eucalypt, or sycamore tree cost?
I mean, you could say it's a 15-gallon tree or something, because if it's an invasive tree, I mean, I would...
Live with that.
I would opt for that, if we, if you're, if you're in fact going to do it.
If a tree to be removed shall be replaced with trees of suitable type, size, and number. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, I think, I think I was just going for the fact that the eucalyptus are not...
They're officially worthless.
Well, yeah.
The second sentence says from an approved tree replacement list, not that it's in kind.
Okay, okay.
If you wanted to clarify, who makes that determination of suitable type, size, and number? It could be by a supplemental report by their arborist.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Kathy's point is that the tree replacement is usually based off current market value, and you have currently marketed, market valued them at zero.
Because they're considered invasive and there's no permit required to remove them or anything at, at this point.
Although the inn did ask permission once before to remove half a dozen eucalyptus along Country Club Drive.
That was before the ordinance, or right around the same time that the ordinance was changed.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. So, what do you recommend we do with this?
I mean...
I've suggested a few edits to the existing condition, and it's up to the, the commission whether they feel that those edits would be acceptable.
I mean, you know, if the eucalyptus trees are so bad, which they, they actually are, they need to replace them now as a part of this project, I mean, that's the alternative, so...
They'll die soon enough of their own accord, I think.
So, I would say this condition as is is very gentle.
Actually, yeah. 13 says if a tree is proposed for removal because of convenience, personal taste, or to facilitate new construction, that doesn't, that doesn't cover the case of, of weakened by the proposed...
The impacts of the construction.
Impacted by the proposed construction. But if we're talking about other than a protected tree, maybe we do need a separate similarly worded condition. And I think replacement with a 15-gallon tree from the approved list would work for me.
That's fine, yeah.
Anything else, Ray, from, from your point of view or Kathy?
No, I mourn for the poor non-natives.
Commissioner Paulson.
That have been named non-natives since our short time of recorded history.
Do you want that determination of suitable size and replacement type to be evaluated by their arborist or by staff?
By the arborist, I think. By the arborist, I think. You'll have the arborist around anyway, I think, so that should be fine. So it, it appears to me that in the resolution, we have two potential changes. One, that we select alternative one for the rooting of this sewer force main. And two, this business about the tree mitigation. Is there anything else that you'd like to see?
I would like twelve removed. I don't, I, I just can't. You just say explosives shall be prohibited for all, all work, or just take it out. I don't even know why we're talking about explosives.
Tell me what page you're reading that on again, please.
Attachment eight, page four.
Four of nine, condition twelve.
Curious how that's done.
Chair Quilisi, Commissioner Lattes, apparently the explosive detonation language is in our current tree ordinance.
Oh.
It may be for a large stump.
Okay, okay.
And if you, if you go down two feet and hit, and hit Calici, you may have to drill, drill a hole in it and break it up to do your construction. I suspect it's something like that.
It's in section four dash eleven point oh seven, paragraph D for performance conditions. Sub-paragraph five, anyone using explosives in connection with the destruction, removal, or trimming of a tree protected by this chapter shall furnish such bond or insurance.
So it's kind of.
Correct, we're just bringing that language.
It's just reemphasizing something in addition to the general condition that all provisions of the code have to be complied with unless explicitly stated otherwise.
Correct.
Okay.
And you're adding, there's that one additional phrase on condition thirty-two as well.
Yeah, I, and that's right, on condition thirty-two.
Oh, yes.
At completion of construction?
After completion of construction activities added to the end of condition thirty-two. So with those three in mind, where, where is the, where is the condition that deals with alternative one versus alternative two in terms of the rooting of the sewer force main?
I think they have to add that.
I don't see it.
I don't either. I think it has to be added that that's part of the.
I know it's a recommendation in the report, but it is a decision that you would have had to make.
Right, we just have to formalize that decision.
Correct. And I think it's just a broader expansion of the description of the approved project.
And where would that go?
It could be whereas, on page one, where we begin, whereas based upon the foregoing facts and findings for design review permit, DRP nineteen zero zero three. The planning commission determines as follows, and then in the second, or paragraph A, you have evaluated the project and determined that its adherence to the design, we could add the language in there.
So long as alternative one.
Including alternative one.
Including alternative one, rooting of the sewer force main, that would be good.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. That would be one, then the tree mitigation, and then adding a few words at the end of thirty-two. And I guess we need really to vote on all three of those, don't we?
I think we can make a motion to just incorporate all three, just as one motion.
Fine, by me.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we approve resolution, the resolution approving design review permit, DRP nineteen dash oh oh three, and tree permit, T nineteen oh two three.
With the following.
As, with the three modified conditions discussed.
And just, just for the record then, those conditions are one, selecting alternative one, rooting of the sewer force main. Two, with regard to mitigating the loss of any tree that is impacted by the construction, that it be replaced with a fifteen gallon tree from the approved replacement list as negotiated with the arborist. And three, that the words after completion of construction activities be added to the end of condition thirty-two.
Agreed.
I'll second that motion.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? Let's have a roll call.
Powers?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lattes?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and good luck with your project.
Appreciate it.
Say we didn't give it the once-over. That is, that is our job. Now, we hope there are fewer dead trees than there are resulting from the construction of our package.
But it, but it is true that tree reforestation and tree planting is probably one of the most significant things that we could do to combat global warming. That and, and getting off of oil and gas. Those two items are really.
Other countries are planting millions of trees, and millions.
Yeah, it's really, it's really important.
Everywhere.
Yep.
Next item is item number three.
Waiting for Kathy.
Oh, yes.
We were kibbishing while we were waiting for Kathy.
Welcome back, and thank you for your testimony. All right, item three is director decisions. Any questions of staff on these director decisions?
I just have one question. So what are the current regulations on tivoli lights? I mean, I'm not opposed to tivoli lights, I'm just, I'm just, do we have anything in the ordinance at all that talks about it?
It states that a director or planning commissioner approval is required for tivoli lights.
Okay.
So that is why it's subject to a DRPRDE. And then we establish the administrative policy on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just a minor correction at the top, the decisions were through the end of July.
I'm sorry?
Yes. The director's decisions conclude with seven thirty-one.
Okay. Makes sense in some, there's at least one, two dates there. Four dates subsequent to seven eleven, right. Looked to me like all pretty straightforward stuff, minor stuff.
Just to note that I just routed this evening a director's exemption for the landscape replacement over here at the Ojai Police Station. So council and the planning commission will have that to review within the next fifteen days.
Okay.
Okay, just one last question. So we have a pre-application conference for a wine tasting room. So if they proceed ahead, there's no requirement for a CUP for that kind of use, is that correct?
It depends on the zone that is within, whether or not, and what they're proposing, whether or not a CUP would be required.
Five ten east, sounds like it's still C one zone.
Correct, so any outdoor dining is still subject to a CUP.
But not the use itself?
Correct.
Yeah, we can't, so we're not able to distinguish at all?
Because it's considered a restaurant-type use, which is allowed in C one. But it would be an intensification of use of the property, so it'd still be subject to a design review permit.
Right, I got that, but it's, I think we're, yeah, I mean, it's just my, my comment. I think we're missing a lot of opportunities to evaluate, to evaluate use, to evaluate uses when we don't have any requirements for conditional use permits.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we, we talk about design review, but we applying design review standards to, when we actually really want to talk about the use, is a very weird way of approaching it. It's not a direct, it's not a good use of the planning tools that are available, and anyway. Something for the future, but.
We'll note that for Title X cleanup discussions.
Yeah, thanks.
There, I mean, honestly, there, there isn't a wave of support for limiting alcohol licenses. I mean, the numbers have been put forth, I brought them forward.
Well, I thought that was a very good.
And, and, but there isn't support for it, so.
Well, how do you know?
Well, it's not being.
Has anybody talked about it? I don't think anybody's talked about it.
I've given the, the council has all the numbers. I love all our council numbers, but you know, the data's all there, the metrics are all there, so. There isn't any, any evidence that there's more crime or more DUIs or anything.
Well, I know, but it's, it's, it's.
It's more about the culture.
It's the whole picture, what do you want in your town? Do you want basically a domination of some, a few selected uses? Or do you want a diversity of uses in it, when you, if you're concerned about that? There's a tool to use it, there's a tool to handle it that's very clear and very straightforward, and it's a conditional use permit. It's not design review, although you can have both.
Yes.
Staff will evaluate that and put it on a future agenda for greater discussions, since it seems like there's more than two people that want this on the agenda.
Yeah, the long-term.
Well, conversations cycle around.
Vitality and economy of the town can go one way or another. It can get totally dominated by the market for tourists, or it can have a better balance that, that balances resident and tourist needs.
No, it is about that balance. In fact, Randy brought up a good point, I think, at a conversation once where he said, well, what, would you feel the same way if it was all yoga studios? And I said, yeah, I would, if there were twenty yoga studios, I'd be saying the same thing.
There may well be.
There might be twenty, but they're all upstairs and tucked out of the way.
Well, good for you. Okay.
Well, I'm glad there's a tool, because I haven't thought it through, so, yes.
But if we start, if we start requiring a CUP for certain kinds of businesses, then we as a commission would have to recommend, and the city council would have to approve that as a modification to the code.
Correct.
So.
We'll put it on as a future discussion item.
Great. All right, moving on to item four, planning commission tentative agenda. Do you anticipate any of these future hearing items to actually pop up two weeks from now? Nothing, nothing written in there, just identifying topics for the September tenth special joint meeting with the council.
Because of the noticing requirements, if it's any item that needs a public notice, that.
We're, we're already too late.
That timeframe has passed.
Okay.
So it would have to be a discussion item. We could contact and see if the Sustainable Living Research Initiative was ready to come back, because that does not need to be a noticed item.
Because it's not a public hearing item, it's a discussion item, okay. All right, we're waiting on Labor Day week, I guess, to see if something turns up. Any other questions of staff on that?
I have a question of staff, but not on that, so I'll wait till we're done. But I have a question for staff regarding where I would go to find a zoning ordinance.
A zoning ordinance?
Well, regarding what the public comment was about.
Oh, the city clerk keeps records of any ordinances that have amended previous zoning ordinances, so.
Where would I, where would I look to, like, is it under animal? Because I've looked up this before, there's like an animal keeping, and then an animal nuisance. But I didn't, I looked there.
Well, that's, the thing is, there isn't one in the current.
Oh, it's not even there?
No. No.
It's not in the current version of the code, so you, you have to go research where it went.
Right now, what's in there is basically barking dogs, barking and aggressive dogs.
God, so nothing about hoofed animals, what was there was removed, it wasn't replaced by anything, so I'm not going to find anything.
Correct, I believe the nineteen fifty-eight ordinance had a definition of livestock as well as the amount of livestock you could have per ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, that would be an appropriate question for the city clerk to go research.
And that was the reference that she made to what the county allows.
Correct.
Which is.
And all that would be included in, in future items.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, move on to item five, liaison schedule. We have canceled meetings, I guess next up will be, I'll be reporting on the next city council meeting, August twenty-seventh, and reporting on September fourth. Doesn't look like we have any reports due right now. And in fact, the MAC meeting, I think, Sherri, you said is, the August MAC meeting was canceled.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too. We do have a committee report for the sustainability committee, which exists, and still exists. And are we at that point?
The committee or the report?
No, we have a report from the committee. Committee met. Well, he was talking about liaison. Oh, we're not even at the report yet. Well, I turned the page and there wasn't anything.
Yeah, it's on the agenda as planning commission committee reports and comments.
I apologize.
Number five.
Okay.
So you have a report, Ray?
Well, Kathy and I do. Kathy and I are, are currently on the sustainability committee. And we're allowing one more, Commissioner, if I believe so. Oh, because we're five, we used to have three.
I keep forgetting.
Ah, okay. It's us.
So who else on the sustainability committee?
Ray and Kathy.
Oh, it's a subcommittee of the planning commission?
Yeah, so prior it was.
Okay, an ad, an ad hoc committee?
Yes, and it's been around since, what, two thousand and seven or nine or?
Along in the.
You were on the original.
No, yeah, it might have been three years ago.
So it's three years old, and Chester was part of it, but now we're down to.
Wojcowski, who was a planning commissioner, but he ended up moving. He was the one who actually initiated and got approval from the city council.
So you have met recently and?
Yes, we met yesterday. We, we met yesterday and prior times too, actually. And, you know, one of the things we were, were doing prior was looking at the sustainability roadmap of the city, which was initially created ten years ago almost, and then.
By city staff.
But now what we've been doing is, we've been looking at what the role, and I don't have, and we don't have a lot of details to put in, but what we're looking at is what could the role of the sustainability committee mean? We're looking at changing the name to possibly something around resilience. We're looking at possibly aspects of what the SLRI represents, but not in its face value in the form that was presented to us. But a committee that would have input from the building appeals board and possibly expert advisors from the community as well. To, to look at zoning, possible zoning overlay, possib, um, options, and alternative materials and building methods, options.
Which would be the BABS.
Which would be the BABS. And things like that, but kind of with, with the.
You could have two members of the BAB on your committee now, too.
So, and that's part, was part of our discussion, like, like who might want to be involved in that. So we, again, we don't have anything in detail, we're just actively pursuing the conversation of what is the focus, what do we want the focus of the sustainability committee to be right now? With the conversation of the SLRI that came up, but also with the declaration of. With the conversation of the SLRI that came up, but also with the Declaration of Climate Change Emergency that the council made. Okay, so then how can we fulfill that resolution with actual action plans and specific measurable results and things like that? So we started, we kind of really put some fire under that conversation last night.
And if you came up with action plans, then they would come back to the commission and then be recommended to the city council if approved? Is that, is that the idea?
So actually, I think maybe the best thing to, thank you for turning that over for me. We would like to meet again, the two of us, and put something down on paper, something that we could actually present with some more detail. Like, right now, it's kind of this broad overview. Bring it back for further discussion with the planning commissions and get input from the rest of the commissioners and staff.
We'd like to have a proposal or a skeleton of a proposal written to present to you and staff.
Are you thinking about, about amending policy statements that currently exist in the city? Are you thinking about instituting a pilot project of some sort, or?
It, it actually could be all of the.
Which direction you're going with?
Well, that's why we want to come back with more detail, because potentially, and we're just, this is just open discussion right now. Nothing is.
Sure.
Obviously set in stone. But we, we talked about both of those things. In addition, we talked about, it could also be the platform for, there's some items that we had, let me look on, see if they're still on here. We had our list from the Planning Commission, oh.
Next page?
Yeah, the next page, thank you.
And.
Yes.
Oh, it's not, it's not agenda.
It's not agenda.
Okay.
These are.
We'll be in. An agenda.
Thank you, so.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe.
Well, it was a report, yeah, a report on a.
So the report kind of went off a little bit.
I thought it fell into the category of committee report. I'm sorry?
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It kind of did, but you're right.
We have, we have a report for you.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, so basically what we're saying is we, we will come back with a more detailed report, and we'll leave it at that for the moment.
Yeah, I wanted to report on what we discussed. That's what we discussed.
Yeah.
And another thing we discussed was the role of the committee that, that we feel strongly about is not to give staff any more workload and to be able to vet things through the, through whatever this committee is.
Unless and until there's something that the commission, commission recommends, then staff analysis would be required, of course.
Going through the correct procedure.
Just at the beginning stages of having a conversation about what a proposal looks like, and we're going to create a draft and come back with that.
So we will come back and present it more formally with more details.
I, I was not able to meet separately with the gentleman who gave that SLRI presentation because of other reasons, not my illness that kept me out of the meeting. And while I, I share his concern about saving the planet, but keep it short and simple in terms of philosophy, I would hope that the committee, as it comes back with recommendations, would take as one of its guiding lights not to knowingly advocate doing anything illegal, which, which the gentleman who presented SLRI admitted to having done during his presentation. That concerned me a lot, so. Any other reports or comments on existing reports?
I have nothing more to say.
Okay.
I can hear Complete Streets.
Yes, we should be doing Complete Streets, that's next.
All right, so we actually met today.
Yes, we did.
And we had a very good meeting. So our two, we actually had three agenda items. One of them we decided to put off just because of the heat, where we've been actually going out onto the streets, collecting street infill date, infill data, and then we're giving that back to a consultant who's working with Public Works Department and how that, our recommendations or just notes that we've, you know, things that we've looked at could be possibly used at the same time that the capital improvement, street paving projects are going on. So we've been using the map, following the city map, what streets are going to be improved, repaved.
Get to those first.
Exactly, so, but we did put that off, the one street we were going to, and we did work on safe routes to school and parks, initial planning. And the second item we did was parking. This will, we had council member Francina was there at our meeting. We worked on parking. We had a big aerial map of the downtown area, and we've made notes. I'm going to go back, actually be putting all those notes together more formally, and I'll come back with a report to the Planning Commission just to let you know what we did. And as far as the safe routes to school, we, we are going to meet meeting next month at, we're going to target TOPA Elementary School first. We're going to be meeting there. We have a little subgroup that's going to be bringing some data we're going to share. We're all going to be there at about when the school gets out, look at traffic and routes and what have you. And then essentially, we're, our goal is to create an additional plan with some detail on it to come back to Planning Commission, present it. If, if everything looks good, we'd like it to then go to city council and to be adopted just as an appendix in our Complete Streets master plan. So I know that's a living document, and there are some areas that potentially we could provide more information and data. So of course, staff can please, you know, comment as needed, but that's what we're, that's what we're doing right now.
It was a spirited meeting with about a dozen people there, which is a larger group than usual, and.
It's always spirited.
And we wound up with this 10-foot by three-foot aerial map of the city with post-it notes all over it, so.
This is for the parking study.
There was a lot of thinking that went into the process of discussing safe routes to school and parks today. So that was, it was one of our more productive recent meetings, I think.
Exactly, and I always like to mention that the Complete Streets meetings are open to the public. We meet the first Wednesday of the month, so that'll be the first Wednesday of September, which I don't have right in front of me. It's the 4th. And we meet here at City Hall from 2:30 to 4:30. Everyone's welcome.
Thank you. Any other reports? Then we have the pleasure of hearing from our city council liaison, Mr. Henry, uh, Heaney.
So as usual, I have tons of notes, not in any order, but. That's fine. So Kathy, I'm glad to hear your Complete Streets idea of making sure that whatever is discussed there is brought back to planning so that we have a, a larger public review of anything that comes out of that committee.
Absolutely.
So I think that's critical, and I was going to highly recommend it moving forward, that I'm not going to look at anything from Complete Streets unless it comes through planning first. So I'm just, that, that's just how I feel about that. I also think personally that the Complete Streets Committee needs revitalization of its membership. That's just my take. I think the same core group has been on it for I don't know how many years, and I'd like to see some new blood into it, but that's up to people to volunteer. The interesting thing about design review versus CUPs and trying to condition how the community evolves, I always find that discussion interesting, and I think it's a worthwhile discussion. So I think what you need to do is agendize it and have that discussion. That also plays into what I'm going to, I said at the last city council meeting, and I'm going to say it again tonight, that comes back into and actually going through Title X and reviewing it. And actually looking at what is there, what isn't there, and what do we need to improve on, or what do we need to modify, change, enhance? But, so that would be one of them. Three more came up tonight for Title X review, three more issues.
Right.
They come up all the time, and I just, you know, I just, I just say, to me personally, part of what you do should be to be, should be to review that whole Title X, and go through it, understand it, look at it, discuss it, and modify it, change it if you need to. I know it's, I know it's starting, but I'm just going to say it's imperative, because every time I'm here, this comes up, so three came up tonight. What do we do with, how many pets do we have in our, how many pets are we allowed to have in our backyard, you know? That's an interesting question. I have met with Elizabeth a couple times. She did show me a form from 2004 that she pulled up online, and for some reason, we can't seem to find that form. And that's okay, because we're going to go find that form, because it's going to come back to you guys. It's going to be agendized as a discussion, but, so you have that.
Could I interrupt you for a moment, Randy?
Um, no, let me finish this, and then I'll let you guys have at me. The other thing I looked at here was the, you know, I wanted to get back to this thing about conditioning. You know, I was reading an interesting article in The Times, it's either today or yesterday, about what prevents building in the state of California. And they really talked about the permitting process, and part of the permitting process is the planning process and excessively conditioning projects, which creates an environment of I can't afford to do that. So I think when we condition things, we need to think about what we're conditioning, how much that conditioning might cost, and then to me, the most important thing is who's going to follow up on the condition? So one of the discussions tonight is that we're going to look at a tree, and if it dies within two years, we're going to go do something about it. I just want to know which one of you is going to monitor that tree for two years? Or do we have the resources available in our community to monitor that tree for two years? And if we start conditioning all of our sites on things of that nature, do we have enough staff to do it? So I think, I, I, while I agree with what you're saying, the content I think is excellent, I think you need to take a step back when you're having that discussion and ask yourself, if we do this, who's going to do it? And if we do this, how much is it going to cost that individual? Okay, and is that cost going to prevent that individual maybe from developing or not developing? So I think all of those are part of that package, and I'd like to see you guys, you know, think that through. And it just came up tonight on that tree, but I'm sure it comes up all the time on the conditioning that we do. Staff conditions. Staff needs to think the same thing, okay? I had one question for staff. I just wanted to make sure that on the architectural, on the archaeological, on the cultural resources reviews, having a monitor and an archaeologist on site, I've just always questioned why we need both. So I'd like, I, I, that's why I was, I was, while we were having the tree discussion, I'm reading cultural resources, trying to figure out, because I was on that committee for three years, and I don't ever remember stating that we were going to have both, and I don't ever remember on the 60-foot, you know, or 50-foot, that, I'm going to tell you. For three years I was on it, and I don't ever remember having that conversation. But needless to say, staff will, will look that up too for us and get back and clarify that. I think it's a good thing to do.
I can actually answer that question.
Okay.
You want me to answer it right now? I can.
Go ahead.
So an archaeological monitor would be for any subsurface findings.
Mm-hmm.
A tribal consult could require a different monitor. So when that specific condition is written, it's talking probably more about subsurface and an archaeological monitor than it is a tribal consult. But under AB 52, the tribe can come and monitor.
Yeah, I think that was one of the discussions we had, to be honest with you, was if I'm a trained archaeologist, I should know just as much, or if I have a degree in archaeology, that I should know as much maybe as a native American.
Or at least know the right questions to ask, yeah.
And that, and trust me, we had a long discussion on that one. I didn't win it, but, but I did want that discussion.
Yes.
So I just always wondered, like, like I watched, what was the, oops, the thing right here on Montgomery that went in the last, the TOPA?
Oh, the TOPA brewery?
Yeah, I, I'm there taking my clothes to the dry cleaners, and they're putting, tying into the sewer line, and I've got a Native American standing there, monitor, and I've got an archaeologist standing there watching it. And just for the life of me, I just, I just looked at that money, and I said, again, why are we requiring two people to do what one person should be able to do? But having said that, we're not going to revisit it, but, okay. Now, Ray, you have some questions for me?
It's, it's wanting input, because I certainly have heard you and others say that Planning Commissioners need to dive into Title X. For me, hearing it like that, it's, it's a bit overwhelming, so I'm wondering what the process to dive into Title X looks like? Is it evaluating which issues or take priority and then look at that section, like, what's?
Here, here's my personal take. Open the book up and go to page one, and you know what? Read it, discuss it, dissect it. When you're done, go to page two. It's not, this isn't rocket scientist work. This is called going through it and methodically understanding it. And you could do a committee, which I think you are going to be doing or something of that nature. I know your chair and I know Susan are meeting, and I know James is meeting right now, but, and I know you asked for a consultant to do it and then come back with their, I just, I just see.
Let me just explain that, because it's one thing for the commission to, to maybe identify problem, problem areas. That, that's where I would start. What are the, where are the problems and list them? And look at, you know, so, so our efforts are focused, and we can, we can review, talk about what the problem is, discuss, and then give direction to staff. But the, you know, we have a problem with the Brown Act. We can't, we can't all sit together and write it unless we're in a meeting. And, and you really need the professionals to write code, because you can't, you just, trying to do it without experience is really, is really asking for a problem. But, but, anyway, what I was going to say is I view that work as some, the city, what we need to, and I wanted to talk about it at the, at a, bring it up as an item for the joint meeting. There needs to be a work program set up for the planning department, and then you put those kinds of activities on the work program, and if it's a high priority, you go, okay, this is the high priority. And then planning staff and the commission knows what it is that we should work on, because it's an allocation of resource as well, and, and so if staff is spending time on that kind of work, you know, it's taking priority over, you know, whatever.
I would disagree. That's what I'm saying. Do it here.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, councilman, but I think what you were saying was a necessary precursor to identifying issues that need to be resolved is reading Title X.
Absolutely.
Understanding what's in there.
Right.
Yeah.
And that in turn would enhance your role as a commissioner and what you should do, what you shouldn't do, what you can do, what you can't do. So I'm just saying, there's a balance to all of it. I'm not, Kathy, I'm not saying there isn't. How you choose to do it, again, you might agendize it and discuss it amongst yourself. How would we do this? Have that discussion. I, again, but when I brought it up at the last council session, I had every council person agreeing with me that this needs to be done. And whether you do it page by page or you do it issue by issue, that's fine, too. But I think if you go page by page, you'll find out that you'll get through it quicker. If the BAB can do it with their four-member board, five-member, five-member board, I'm, you know, and they're doing building codes, which. So.
Please.
I just wanted to make a suggestion or recommendation possibly. In the past, while I was on the Planning Commission, we had to go through the building code twice, the different building code. That was before the BABS was created. We also had to do the housing element. And what we ended up doing was, because we had to go through an entire document, we would each on our own take our packet home, and we'd mark it up, and then we'd bring it back, and we'd start at the beginning, and we'd go page by page, and it actually was really efficient, because invariably, a lot of us had the same comments. Somebody had something else, but then we, staff was there, we could get advice, whatever, strike this, add that. And then, of course, staff would take it back, or they had, like with the building code, of course, they had a consultant. But they would actually formulate the language, like, we weren't actually rewriting the code. We basically came up with the.
With direction.
With, yeah, so we were just saying, we see a problem with this, or what about, what about this, or what about that, or that's the problem.
You had the right idea.
Yeah, so, but it was, I found it to be pretty, it was really, I, and the rest of my commissioners, I think we all kind of felt, because we, we use that same process. over and over again.
Very educational.
Because it did work. So I just wanted to throw that out.
I, I wouldn't want to do anything that overwhelms you.
I think, yeah.
Okay, but that's why I said, one page at a time. If you, if you can't take between two-week meetings, one afternoon to read one page and actually make some notes on it and bring it back and have a discussion. And again, what I would do is agendize it as, so it's always agendized. And if you have time to get to it, you do. If you don't, you move it to the next meeting.
As a discussion item, yeah.
Yeah, and that way you don't, you're not caught up in it. But, but, but it needs to be done. So, and then my last comment is committees and ad hoc committees. And all of this stuff that's going on in this community right now about sustainability, we got Carnegie Mellon, which is now going to...
The flip lab.
Move the flip lab. And then we got the other group in Oakview that's meeting. And now we have a new committee that we're going to be discussing, I believe, at council session on climate resiliency. And then you have your committee. And I'm sure there's 10 other committees in this valley that are already formed. I, and we have a general plan update, and we have a city general plan update. Somewhere in between here.
Well, that's going to be the other.
So my suggestion would be, let's figure, and by the way, the county is doing a resiliency committee, too. So there's going to be a lot of processes that are duplicated. So maybe we need to take a step back and really ask ourselves, you know, what, you know, let's prioritize some of these and then commit ourself to something.
Has anybody else found a solution to any of our issues?
Well, no, because again, you know, it's a lot of talk, and talk is good at this stage. But something's got to get created, and then through the creation, you'll be able to prioritize and start figuring out, what do we want to fix first? Initially, it was water. Water's on the back burner now. Now it's gas and oil, and, and if it's not that this week, then it's this this week. So again, we're just all over the place. So I think as a city, we need to take a step back and, and help ourselves out by not creating so many forces that eventually are going to have to be combined. But just, let's just recognize that we're all, here's the most important thing. We're having a discussion. Okay? We weren't having this discussion, let's say, a year ago or two years ago, or three years ago, or even five years ago. That's the most important thing that's come out of this, is there's a recognition, and this community is in the forefront of it, that we have a problem and that we're willing to work together to try and solve it. So that's all I'm trying to say is, I'm not telling you to break your ad hoc committee up, but I'm saying, and then here's something for, for me. This is what I look at, diversity. Okay? Diversity in the community. And the feedback from that diversity in the community. We can't have the same 10 people sit on the same committees in and in and in and in and in to continuum. It just doesn't make sense. There's 7,500 of us. There's probably 25,000 of us in this area, yet we only get the same five or 10 people on these committees. We need to think through that. We need to attract more people to help us solve this problem rather than the same five or 10. That's what I'm looking for, diversity. So I'm hoping we get it. All right, so I have, thank you. Yes, sir.
You said at the outset of your discussion this evening that questions related to Title 10 came up three different times this evening. I wrote down pets versus livestock. I wrote down excessive conditioning, though I'm not sure that was one of your three.
Well, the conditioning was the CUP versus, and along with the C, along with the design review.
Okay.
Trees.
Tree ordinance.
And then trees.
Oh, oh, I thought that was the condition, though.
Well, that was the condition.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And then, like I said, the thing I touched on again was just recognizing that when we do a condition, that we're placing a, it may not be a burden, but we are placing something that might restrict the ability for a homeowner or someone to actually do their project. And that was pointed out by the state. And that's, that's one of the biggest issues that they think is affordable housing is not being built, is the fact that there's just too many impediments and too many restrictions. And I'm not talking environmental, I'm just talking about the fees that we charge are sometimes just incredibly high.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Anything else of council or commission business? Then we are adjourned at 8:16. Thank you all very much.